Meeting the USD four thirty-one to order. First note is Chris Callan is filling in for Teresa's board clerk tonight, thank you. Roll call, we're missing Jessica Bays and Dawn Fisher, other five of us are present. Agenda, I don't think there's been any additions or changes.
No.
I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the agenda as presented. Discussion, all in favor? Pose, motion carries five zero. Item number four, review of district data. Mr. Kratus, I will turn it over to you.
So in, within your board agenda, I did present to you the Fastbridge data from each of the building principals. And then within the district data is our state assessment data. So we will start with having Roosevelt, Mrs. Walker actually present the data. And then if you have questions, as we do go through the data, just understand that the data is the data. It's a piece, it's a piece of information. It is a snapshot, even though we are looking at Fastbridge, which is a system that typically wants to have us measure three times. We measure in the fall, the winter, and the spring. It is a snapshot of that particular day. And there are some, there are some particulars about the Fastbridge data from, from fall to winter to spring. The understanding within the system is that the student should have been provided with more knowledge and information. So the, the scores that are used and some of these ladies that are here that use it on a daily basis can explain it way better than I do, but the scores actually increase as we go along in time. So even though a third grader is taking the test, from fall to winter to spring, that benchmark is actually raised each time that they take it. So when we're looking at the, when we're looking at where they are, where they fall in terms of risk, that sometimes ebbs and flows because of that increase of knowledge that, that, that the test is, is already calculating into it. So I'll go in and turn it over to Mrs. Walker to talk about Roosevelt and, and our pre-K and TK and kindergarten and first grade data. And I'll have it up here on the board as well, if you would like to take a look at it there. Or it is in your, is in the data that you have in your information in your board packet.
Ready?
Go ahead.
Okay, good evening, first of all. So I'm gonna start with our pre-four data. So we use in our pre-four, we use two different assessment tools. But the state recommended one, and I guess the state approved one, is MYIGDs. The other one we use is ESGI, and that's more, the teachers put, that's what they use for like checklist and stuff. So the MYIGDs has set assessments that they want them to give. So if you look at our pre-four, in early literacy, it's titled Strong Progress, Moderate Progress, At Risk. So pre-four and TK test three times a year, but it's offset when our kindergarten and first grade test. Because like we just had our conferences for kindergarten and first grade. Our TK and our pre-K conferences don't happen until November. So they're offset a little bit. So you can just look, in the fall, our strong progress started at fifty-one percent. The moderate at thirty-two percent, at risk was at seventeen percent. So, and then if you look at the winter, we increased our percentage to fifty-four, fourteen, and then thirty-two. And then in the spring, obviously, that's really great. So we increased our students that were at our strong progress and decreased our students that were our moderate and at risk. And there on the side, it tells what those assessments are, what those assessments are. And then in early numeracy, we have the same type of data. There are strong progress, our moderate progress, and our at risk. So in the fall, we had forty-three percent that were at strong progress. In the winter, sixty percent that were at strong progress, and then seventy-four percent that were at strong progress. So, you know, each testing period, those percentages came up, which mean we had more kids in those, more kids in our strong, in our strong progress, and less kids in our moderate and at risk. So, any questions on that so far?
And everything that you're looking at this, tonight, is two thousand twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three data. So it's all last year's data.
And I will say, like our, our pre-three, we have now put her on board with doing the ESGI. So she'll have an actual assessment tool that she's inputting what she wants to assess the kiddos on. So we'll actually have some straight data on that, too. And then our transitional kindergarten is next. So we put in transitional kindergarten several years ago. It was put in for the main purpose of those kiddos who needed another year to grow. It has proved to been, to be very, very successful. We have had a lot of contact actually from area schools about how we run our program. In fact, at the beginning of November, Russell is coming back out, they've come out. This will be their third time out, because they implemented a TK last year. So they wanted to come back out and see, just get some more feel on it. And so that's really exciting, because it shows that your hard work is, I guess, paying off. So our transitional kindergarten, she uses ESGI. So this is, she puts her own things, her own testing points in there. But it gives, it's just a really nice way to have like collective data that's organized. So if you look on the side, it tells what is tested. We just use, we just do benchmark. So in the fall, you can see that we had sixty-eight percent students on benchmark. In the winter, there were ninety-eight percent students on benchmark. And in the spring, there were a hundred percent students on benchmark. Another thing about when we go into, when we look at our kindergarten data, we can tell always those kiddos that were recommended for TK and went through the TK program, opposed to the kiddos that were recommended for TK and did not go through the TK, TK program. Because those kiddos, those kiddos always test at low risk. So that's just another proving point that it really is a great program. And then if you look at the, the early numeracy, again, on the right-hand side, it shows what those, what the assessment, what's being tested. In the fall, ninety percent at benchmark, winter, ninety-three percent at benchmark, and then in the spring, ninety-five percent benchmark. Any questions? We'll move on to the kindergarten then. So our kindergarten and first grade are both tested on Fastbridge. We test fall, winter, and spring. When we test in the fall, we give our kiddos, we wait till after Labor Day to give them some time to acclimate to the environment, of course, being back in school. For those kindergartners that did not do TK, for being in school all day. So we give them some time before we test. So I just wanna kind, I wanna explain, because this is low risk, some risk, and high risk. So this is different than what Ames Web is. So the low risk means likely to meet grade level goals. Some risk is unlikely to meet grade level goals without supplemental instructional support, which means title, or that's what we refer it to. And then our high risk is very unlikely to meet grade level goals without intensive instructional support. So those kiddos get another thirty minutes of extra support a day from our title program. So if you look at our fall, the low risk, we had eighty-nine percent students, eleven percent at some risk, and then zero at high risk. In the winter, and I'm sorry, this is kindergarten reading, sorry, didn't say that. On the winter, we have eighty-six percent at low risk, twelve percent at some risk, and two percent at higher risk. And then in the spring, we have sixty percent at low risk, thirty-three percent at some risk, and seven percent at higher risk. I will put out there, so the, the Fastbridge testing has huge jumps. We were very aware that when we tested our kiddos in the fall, the first time we tested them, that the scores looked really good. We knew the bottom would drop out at some point. And it was either gonna be in the winter or the spring. And that is because there is a huge jump between those testing, I guess, materials is what you wanna call it. So we're very aware. And then in the early math, our fall, we had ninety-five percent at low risk, five percent at some, and zero at high. In the winter, we had eighty-four percent at low, sixteen percent at some, and zero percent at high. And then the spring, we had eighty-six percent at low risk, twelve percent at some risk, and two percent at high risk. And so I'll just kind of explain, so our, our title teachers see our MTSS, they see all of our high-risk kiddos. And then the pullout is the high-risk kiddos, and then the lowest, the lowest kiddos in the some risk. So like when we do our MTSS groups, our aides take our low-risk students. So remember, those are your kiddos that are likely to meet grade level. Our title teachers take the high risk and then, because they need more extensive intervention time. And then our teachers take the some risk. Any questions on that? Okay, moving on to first grade. So our early reading in first grade, in the fall, we had eighty percent at low risk, twenty percent at some risk, and zero percent at high risk. In the winter, we had seventy-eight percent at low risk, twenty-two percent at some risk, and zero percent at high risk. And then in the spring, we had sixty percent at low risk, thirty-six percent at some risk, and four percent at high risk. Again, we're, I mean, very aware that our scores dropped. We've discussed a lot, we have went over the schedules, we have added more groups. We have, obviously, we've added two more aides this year, thank you, that is very helpful. So, I mean, we're working to adjusting to how Fastbridge tests, because it is a lot different than Ames Web and last year being you know, we're working that out, so. Oh, go ahead, you have something?
When we talk about testing for your kindergarten and first graders, it's a, it looks a lot different than when we test our fourth and fifth graders. Because our fourth and fifth graders are a lot more independent in terms of their reading. And so the, the testing that is being done at Roosevelt is very intensive. Not to take away from the other buildings, but it does, it becomes more, more on the, the teachers, because you're not, you're not working with real independent readers at that particular point in time. The other thing I wanted to point out was, we're throwing out some acronyms. Dean, you forgot to stop us. MTSS is multi-tiered system of support. And so MTSS is a, is a very specific means of using these categories to be able to focus in on the students that need the most help. And so very structured environment when it comes to Roosevelt and Lincoln. They do a great job of structuring that and having that separate time to focus in on those students that need the more, the, the higher level of support. And, and, and I'm not taking anything away from the secondary level, middle school and high school, but if you go to most middle schools and high schools, it's not as structured. It's not, it doesn't look the same. But the elementaries is like the quintessential, like, example of what MTSS is supposed to look like. And our elementaries both do a great job of that.
Yeah, it's very specific skills that they work on. And I mean, like our low-risk kids, our aides work with them. And as the year goes on, you know, like they'll take the first graders that are ready to go into chapter books. And, you know, we really try to push both ends, obviously different directions, though. And then on the early math in our first grade, in the fall, we had ninety-five percent at low risk, five percent at some, zero at high. In the winter, eighty-seven percent at low risk, eleven percent at some, and two percent at high. And then in the spring, we had sixty-nine percent at low risk, twenty-nine at some, and two percent at high. And I mean, like Mr. Kratus was talking at Roosevelt, so all of our tests are given by a teacher. None of them can be done independently. So it takes us about three days to test, three days and usually two subs. So it is very, it is very intense. And they're five and six, so every day is a new day.
I forget, do we have two teachers, title teachers, do they share math and reading?
Yes, we have a full-time, Dela Boxberger is a full-time title. Janelle Ruben is part-time title, and then Kathy Drew is a full-time title aide. And their, I mean, their schedule is jam-packed, because we implemented the last couple of years where if we have pre-three and pre-four students that get put on our SIP process, our title ladies do a good job at trying to work in, work them into their schedule. Any other questions?
And on this, these pages, there's the social.
There's.
Sayers.
Okay. Yeah.
You might talk a little bit about that, you don't have to go into a great detail, but just like, like, who fills that out?
The teachers fill that out.
Yeah.
So Ms. Allison, our school, our school counselor, she uses that to determine what kiddos, obviously, would also would teacher input, but she uses that to determine what kiddos need one-on-one, small group, or any type of behavioral counseling. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
So basically, the, the drop-off, you're saying it's the, the form of testing that is causing that issue, not?
Yeah. Yeah, the, the expectations are, you know, they go from, just for example, in the fall, they're not tested on anything as far as like a reading a sentence or anything. So then in the winter, it comes that they read sentences. But then in the spring, it comes to their reading a passage, you know, so. And then like our passage compared to the second grade passage that they read in the fall, our passage is like that, the second grade passage is like that, and it's read completely independently. Ours is not read independently. It's read to a teacher, because they have to count accuracy and things like that. And I'm not sure how Lincoln does theirs, but same, yeah, so. There's, I mean, there's many discussions going on. Our title teachers, and Lincoln's title teachers have met, Chris and I were with them. A lot of discussions going on on how to make things, I don't wanna use the word better, but maybe to see our data increase. That might not be the right word either. Because I know you look at data, and you know, you look at these scores, and you think, well, why are we dropping? Well, and that's something that we talk about every time we test. And I mean, it does, it comes down to a day-to-day basis. You know, it also comes down to, these kiddos are five and six years old. And there's a lot of testing that happens at that age, probably too much, honestly. I mean, the teachers, the teachers do a great job, and they're very diligent on how they spend their days and.
So the Fastbridge is a, a national testing? So how do we rate compared to others, similar schools or schools?
So I don't, it shows by district on there, but it doesn't show nationally, does it? Does it? Okay, I, I honestly don't look at nationally, because I'm more concerned with ours.
Yeah. But I, I was just curious if other districts have that same trend in, in the testing or not?
It'd be interesting to, to see if they do.
And like, if I remember right, Ames Web, do you guys have that, like the graphs and?
Yes.
All that for Fastbridge, too?
Ames Web data was a lot more friendly than Fastbridge data is.
Okay.
Divided out as well, like before we had the pyramids that you could see.
It was, yeah, that was nice to see.
And now there's like a plethora of.
A bar of graphs. Pretty.
Gives us a lot more information, but it's a lot, it's a lot.
Any other questions for Mrs. Walker? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is Callan.
I'm gonna go ahead and start with our, our Fastbridge data here for reading. This was last year's score, and our numbers are on benchmark and at risk. And you can see our different reading tests, our A reading test, which is just our, our reading skills test. And then our CBN reading is our one-minute passage readings. And when we benchmark, so we benchmark all the students three times a year. They read three one-minute passages, and the teachers mark them. We count how many words, Will counts how many words that they read for us. So they get a fluency and accuracy number. So you can kind of see those scores here. We test every student the three times, and in our lower students, we progress monitor. So some of them are reading more often than that, and we're tracking their progress as we go in setting goals for them and adapting their intervention to get them going. Then you can see below is our whole group recommendations as you go throughout. And you can see a lot of our struggles are with phonics. We've noticed that our core curriculum has some phonics gaps. We use Jermies right now for our core, and it doesn't have a very strong phonics piece. So that's been a lot of our focus this year. Last year, when we started using Fastbridge, it was giving us these phonics recommendations. So we found some supplemental phonics materials that we've been using. We've been sending our teachers to letter string, which is for some phonics and, and science and reading, and trying to target that a lot. You might notice that there's a lot of students in intervention at Lincoln. This is a struggle for us, these numbers should be lower. Right now, we have our aides leading our intervention groups, and our teachers leading our enrichment group. So enrichment is our highest students. That should actually be reversed, but our numbers are too big. So we really try to have as many small groups as we can, and the aides specializing. And Mrs. Applegate and Mrs. Luthers do a great job with training the aides, and getting the materials that they can handle, and work well with the students, and moving around groups to better suit them. So you can kind of see that here. And then we've got our math. And included twenty-three, twenty-four as well. Right now, with our math for twenty-two, twenty-three, kind of the same, AMATH is our skills. And then CBN, Math Automaticity, is more math facts. So those are their scores for that. They were on track for group-wide recommendations, it kind of does the same thing for math. And you can see our scores from this year as well. Math, we've still been using our iReady math curriculum, which was new a few years ago. The teachers seem to like it quite a bit. Do you need me to go through specific scores, or? Okay, we'll move on to third grade. Can kind of see the same thing.
I'm making you seasick, I'm sorry. I'll add stuff on that.
I'm going too quick. There's our numbers, fall, winter, spring. You can also see our group growth. Those are expected numbers, if they had aggressive, typical, or modest and flat growth. And then our CBN automaticity and our accuracy. Most of the time, we can quickly correct accuracy, they're just reading through the passages too quickly. And we tell them to slow down, and that usually fixes the problem. So we don't see a lot of accuracy problems. A lot of our students can progress through our phonics groups and then get stuck in fluency. So fluency is how quickly you can read a passage. We have a lot of different interventions that we use for that. Third grade, there are whole group recommendations with phonics and fluency as well. Then our math, went from sixty-one benchmark in the fall to sixty-five in the spring. And they were on track with whole wide group interventions. This year, we're starting the year with sixty-three percent on benchmark and thirty-seven percent at risk. Fourth grade, this is kind of an interesting group. So we saw a dip in our fourth grade last year's scores. So we saw a dip in our fourth grade last year's scores. And Mrs. Applegate and I did some research and there was a nationwide gap in phonics for fourth grade and it's followed them to fifth grade. So they're presuming that maybe during the COVID time, that the fourth graders missed some valuable phonics skills they were able to maintain when they were in third grade. And then when they got to fourth grade, we saw a phonics gap. So that was kind of interesting. Mrs. Henslet did a great job of adapting and Mrs. Applegate to get those students going on some phonics skills. But like I said before, we had to really go back, find a supplemental phonics curriculum and work through that with them. Then this year, as fifth graders, we kind of saw it again a little bit, rear its head. At the start, or currently, so the weekly of ten, twenty-three, our seventh graders had fifty-three percent below benchmark. Third grade fifty-three, fourth fifty-three, and our fifth graders, so that's, fifth graders, that'd be this group here on the data sheet, had fifty-seven percent below benchmark. So that was kind of that interesting phonics group. We saw the most fifth graders in phonics that we've seen in quite a while this year, which was kind of interesting to see. It was really challenging for our teachers because by that point, we usually don't have any students in phonics or really struggling with phonics, we had a large number. So they really had to adjust and figure that out and get through that. So you can see them in the bottom half, the twenty-two, twenty-three. And our fourth grade math, sixty-seven percent were on benchmark at the start of the year and we ended with sixty-nine percent. And our whole group recommendation was on track. And then we started this year below there, sixty-three percent. And then seventy-three percent on CDM automaticity. And lastly is our fifth grade reading. Twenty-two, twenty-three, we started at fifty-two percent and ended in fifty-seven percent in the spring. And then this fall, they started with fifty-four percent. This year, we've been adjusting to the Every Child Can Read Act. The new act was implemented from the state. It says that we need to have science of reading for our students. So we've been learning a lot about that at Lincoln. Part of that act is communicating what interventions the students are into parents. So Trina and Mrs. Applegate have been really working hard on preparing a letter to tell parents what intervention group that their students are in and what that means. It has been kind of difficult to make sure that it's in a language that everybody understands and compare it to their data that we're sending home. So, so they don't just get a chart in the mail and a letter that has a chip mark on it. They're gonna be able to understand, this is what this means to be in this intervention group. So they've been working on those letters and have got those sent out to parents. We didn't have to include math, but we decided that it was a good idea to communicate with parents what intervention group that their student was in, because they're an important part as well. We do give the SABR's test as well for behavior interventions. Our teachers go through that and mark the students. Students that are the lowest get one-on-one intervention from our school social worker, Mrs. Westhoff. And there are some that have whole group interventions and small group interventions. So it's kind of like little groups that work on different skills with different groups of students. So actually was busy almost all day with that today, pulling small groups, working on social skills and different things that the students are missing. Want to talk about state assessment scores?
No, I'll get there.
Okay. So a Lincoln test, second through fifth, for reading and math. A fourth for social studies and fifth grade for science. There is a practice state assessment for second graders that we're gonna try this year. But they've never done it before, so that should become interesting to see. Do you ladies have anything else to add?
Are the parents okay, supportive of the groups that you've got set up? I guess for both elementaries?
Most of the time.
Yeah, I mean, I tell, she sends home, she calls parents to make sure.
We send out home letters, there's a few that say no. We haven't had anybody say no to our math and reading intervention groups, but we have had a few that say no to behavior interventions. They might see an outside counselor or they want to try to correct an issue at home. But very few.
Any other questions for Mrs. Cal? No, thank you.
All right, so as you can see, most of our students fall into low, low-risk, some-risk categories, which has been pretty typical for our middle school throughout the years. You know, as, as Mr. Crowdes said, it looks a little different at our level. And in the past, we've, we've had all our students be in the regular ed, language arts and math classes, and then the ones that were in our tier two went to math fundamentals class as well. And then they did their pull-out instruction at that point with, with our title teachers. So we kind of talked about that last year and, you know, thought that if a student's already struggling in math, you know, why put them in that math class? And then another math class on top of it with the math fundamentals. You know, and same thing with reading, if they're always struggling with reading, why put them in a reading class? And then another reading class where they're struggling. So this data that you see is from the old format where everybody's in, in an English class and those who need it in a math fundamentals class. Our next set of data will be in the new format where, of what we're doing this year, where if we have our regular, our, our low-risk and no-risk kids in English and math classes and then those who need it are in a reading or a math fundamentals class, and that is their math and reading class. They're teaching the same thing that they are in the regular classroom. They're just breaking it down a little bit more and filling in some holes and gaps in the learning in those levels. And then we, during our lunch and MTSS time, we have silent sustained reading to help with, with the reading and, and then pull out time for our title teachers at that time, do pull out with the kids, our tier three kids are, you know, are low-tier two and then, you know, our tier three kids are with, with our resource room. So that's where we're at. We look, we're, you know, we're, we look forward to seeing, you know, how that, how that helps our data. You know, maybe bring some of those kids up from, from high-risk to, you know, bring them up a little bit. So bring those numbers up there. But again, really, that's all, I mean, I, I don't, I'm, we're not near as in-depth as, as the elementary because it looks, we do it a little different up there. FastBridge has a number of different reporting formats that we can do. So I mean, any, any information we want, we can get it. It's just, you know, again, this is our first year, like they've, like we've said before. So learning how to read it ourselves, how to read that data ourselves is, is, you know, a learning process. And, you know, my, my, my two title teachers have been to several trainings on, you know, on, on how to learn how to read that, read those graphs and relay that information to parents in a way that they can understand it. You know, obviously, at the end of the day, we want as many kids in the no-risk column as we can get, you know? And that's what we try to do every day when we, when we come to school is, you know, our, my, my teachers worked, you know, work to increase their skill level and, and, you know, let the numbers take care of themselves. Any questions on that?
I know in the middle school, you don't have many aides. Do the teachers, the two teachers, do you feel like they're able to focus on this? I mean, at the middle school level, or do you think you need more resources to help out with that?
Well, if you're offering to give me more teachers, yes, we'll take it. I mean, it, it is, I mean, they, they, we did have to, you know, finagle their schedules a little bit. You know, they're not taking, you know, their lunch exactly when, you know, their designed time is, but they're still getting their lunch. And I think one of them actually does an intervention like at the last five minutes of her lunch or something like that too. So I mean, it is, that's the hard part about doing this at the middle school level is funding that time to, you know, because in doing this and giving that, putting that time in the middle of the day for silent sustained reading and, and, and those enrichment activities, we took away homeroom and shortened our classes three minutes apiece. You know, so it's, but we also have three lunch periods, you know, which again, always looking at improving. So, you know, there might be some things we can do to help out with that, just haven't sat down to do that yet.
Any other questions for Mr. Brungardt? No, thank you. Mr. Mason.
More, you guys need more? Thanks. Let the rest. Okay, so, kind of like what Mr. Brungardt said, you know, elementaries do a great job with MTSS and, and, you know, pulling out their kids, giving them extra help. The high school is the only school in the district that has no title services. So for me to get extra help for these kids, I'm gonna have to get creative in how to do that, you know, with our schedule. One process, one thought, talking to the schools in our league, a lot of the high schools in our league don't have MTSS in their schools either. Some of them use their seminar time to pull those kids out that, that are high-risk to give them interventions on math and reading. And I've thought about doing that as well. So I, you know, have to kind of weigh the options. Those kids that are high-risk in math and reading are probably also behind in homework. They're probably, you know, the kids that may miss a lot of school. So that seminar time is used to make up homework, go see teachers, get help in, in, in classes and make up tests, stuff like that. So in order for the high school to get really, a real good intervention system in place, I would have to get pretty creative within the, within the schedule to do that. With that being said, three or four years ago was the first time we actually started using screeners for math and reading at the high school level. Because at that time, we were using AIMS Web and AIMS Web only goes up to eighth grade level. But for the KISA process, we had to collect some data. So, so we started using AIMS Web. Well, we showed just like the other schools, major growth. And by the end of the year in the spring, we had like zero kids in, in high-risk, right? So when we got this FastBridge data and we used it for the first time last year, it was a little bit alarming when you see it because it feels like we're, we're not showing a whole lot of growth right now. You know, and I, I think over the years, as we sit here next year, excuse me, I will be able to compare next year's sophomores to this year's ninth graders to see how they have grown, you know, throughout the year, if that makes sense. So looking at the data this year, it's gonna be kind of hard to determine where we're at and what we need to do, if that makes sense. Okay, so just breaking this down, looking at the reading for ninth grade, really similar with the middle school, we're really heavy in the middle with low-risk and some-risk. What I thought was interesting was in the fall, when we first did this last year, we had five students at the high-risk that jumped up to eight in the winter, then we went back down to five in the spring. So what that, you know, I mean, that's what that data means, it's hard to say right now because this is the first year we've used that, this stat. Tenth grade. And so this was last year's 10th grade class and they stayed really pretty consistent. They were much higher percentage in the higher, in the higher risk, both in math and reading. And they also scored lower on the state assessments last year than we have in the past. Okay, so what that says is, you know, last year's sophomore class, we really struggled with, with some of our, our assessments. 11th grade last year, we had a, again, high percent in the high-risk in both math and reading. But we did show some growth from the fall with fifty-five percent, just over half of our kids in low-risk or higher, up to about sixty percent. So we showed some growth there in reading. Over to the math. Okay, sorry, the 12th, 12th grade on the next page there. We did not test the seniors last year in the spring when we were doing the FastBridge screening with the other students. We were a week away from finals. So I, I felt like the finals were more important, getting ready for the finals there. But the seniors did show quite a bit of growth. If you look in the fall, we had nineteen percent at high-risk and that dropped down to nine percent in the wintertime. So, you know, our seniors did show growth, growth there. In math, last year's freshman class really was tested pretty strong. We only had four students in the high-risk, but then again, by the spring, that rose up to seven students. Okay, so the way I understand this testing works is, you know, as the year goes, the test gets harder and more in-depth because they feel like, you know, when they design this test, that the students are getting more and more concepts taught. But also, if a student is doing really well on it, they get, they get tougher and harder questions as they go along with it as well, if that makes sense. So it's kind of geared towards how the students do. So it's really hard to sit here and determine what kind of growth we're showing until we get a couple of years into this, if that makes sense. In the math on the ninth grade as well, if you look at the some-risk, we, let's see, in the fall, let me look here. We actually went from a high-risk and, and some-risk, rose that quite a bit until the low, the low-risk grade where we had fifty percent of our students in low-risk. So we had seventy-two percent of our whole ninth grade class in low-risk and no-risk, which would be benchmark or higher. So the freshman class did show a lot of growth there. And again, just like the reading, our 10th graders last year, you know, scored a little bit lower in the, in the some-risk area, we had quite a few students there, which we did decrease six percent in the some-risk area. Then our senior, again, last year's senior class showed a lot of growth in math as well from twenty-one percent in the fall being high-risk, down to eight percent in the winter. So I did do some comparing to our freshmen this year, which would have been eighth graders last year, to see if they had shown any growth from their FastBridge screeners as eighth graders. So last year in the spring, this, so to be this year's freshman class, we had eleven percent, eight students that were no-risk. That was thirteen percent, which, you know, nine students has done no-risk as freshmen. We did decrease a lot to high-risk, went from twenty-four percent last year in the spring to nineteen percent this year in the fall. So it, last year, this year's freshmen tested a lot better in the fall than they did last year's eighth graders in the spring. So I think that's where we're gonna start seeing that longitudinal improvement, if that makes sense. We tested these kids within the first two or three weeks of school. So it wasn't like, you know, I mean, that they had just started school. So from the eighth grade to freshman year, they did improve a lot. So we'll see as the years go, once we can compile that longitudinal data, how it stacks up. Does anybody have any questions on that FastBridge testing? The other information I gave you, this was actually pulled off of the, our building report and this is included in our KISA. But what I wanted to point out, if you look at that lighter box in the lower right corner, that is the predicted effectiveness rate that KSDE says it hoses and should have when you take into consideration the percentage of, you know, low-income families, you have social, emotional, whatever, whatever data is in there, Mr. Crowdes, free-reduced, the percentages of free-reduced lunches. So basically, what the state would predict is that our effective rate would be between forty and fifty percent. And our five-year average is actually sixty percent. So, what that tells us is that we are, as a district, and this is, this is not just high school, this is district-wide, that we were, we are, our effective rate is 10% higher than what the, the predicted rate would be.
Tom, that, that effectiveness average is, is based on our graduation reports and then a five-year success average of students going on to have some sort of post-secondary, get a job, get a skill, effectiveness after, after they've left high school. So, so based on our confidence, which has a lot of factors based into it as well, you know, we did score quite a bit more effective than what the state had predicted this as.
And the reason I wanted to provide this data, we have all this data on math and reading, and it's raw, and, you know, if you look at it, it looks like, you know, especially, I mean, the high school math and reading, it's, it's not showing a ton of improvement in one year, but as a district, we are outperforming what our predicted, you know, interval should be, so. I think in the end, we want our students to leave our, our district, prepare for post-secondary success, getting some sort of training out after high school, and we are outperforming what that predicted rate should be on that. So, I think as a district, the data shows that we are doing really, really well. In the meantime, the basic math and reading skills, we need to look at how we can improve those as well, so.
I guess question, this deviates a little bit, but the last several years, we've been doing the summer program to pull kids in that need help. Do you use this testing as part of that tool to?
At the high school, it's just credit recovery.
Okay.
So, it's the students that are behind, pace to graduate on time, we bring those kids into recovered credits. So, we're, we're not working on individual skills though.
Okay. And how about?
We do, and it helps us determine which ones need to come. Invite a large number then, about anybody who's in intervention, or we feel like might test lower when they come back, or lose some during the summer, we invite them all.
And that's the same thing with Roosevelt and the middle school as well.
Okay. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
Thanks.
I'll, I'll finish up with the state assessment, but I wanted to touch on a few things. So, I think you've heard the, the administration talk a lot about growth, and the, the typical way of looking at, whether it be state assessments or other data, is we compare this year's third grade class to next, next year's third grade class. And although that is an easy way to take a look at data and compare third grade to third grade, what we would like to do is take a look at longitudinal data and look at third grade and how that student performs as fourth grader, fifth grader, sixth grader, seventh grader. We feel like that that is a more effective way of, of, of actually measuring, and then we, we can also get into the granular level to say, okay, how is Johnny doing at third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, and see if we have growth that's taking place there as well. So, that, that takes a lot more intense, you know, data collection, which, as you can see, we, we, we have that, but it also takes a lot more time to take a look at that as well. And so, that is, that is something that I think we have good buy-in on that. A couple of times, as the administration was talking, you know, some of the things that we were talking about is why is that data drop? And I think, you know, some of the things that we, we as a district can do is to provide some of that effective PD training in, whether it be fast bridge trainings to, to be able to look at the data more effectively. You know, I know we have, Mrs. Applegate has already started the letters training, I believe, which I believe is going to be a, an asset in the future, and we'll talk about that more in the near future. And then, making sure that, that the assessments in our curriculum are lining up as well. And that'll be a, that's a discussion that we've had administratively, that we wanna make sure that, that what we're actually teaching is lining up with the direction that we need to be going. So, those will be discussions that we'll have, and it fits into the ideas and, and the things that are within the strategic plan as well. That effective professional development being probably a high, high priority on that, whether it be fast bridge training, letters training, or others that's, that's effective, and then we follow up with that to make sure that that's gonna be effective.
Does that make sense to everybody?
So, if we take a look, state assessment goals, if you've been reading the newspaper, if you're on social media and you happen to see a KPI article, they, they are really hammering state assessments, and, and I'm not, I'm not making excuses for anything, I will be, I'll be a hundred percent honest with you. State assessments change relatively, relatively often, and so, you know, so it is a, it is a test, and it is a one-day test. I know it takes place, whether you do one or two or three days, but it is a snapshot, okay? So, I mean, if, if a student's cat died, you know, that could affect their state assessment scores. I'm not making excuses for anything, I'm just saying, you know, if they got a new puppy, that could affect their state assessment scores. We always go to the negative, so I, I, let's throw that positive in there. So, so if we take a look, and I, if you looked at the, this data earlier, I did kinda condense it a little bit, the, the raw numbers, the total of students is not exactly something to probably compare, you know, like third graders, last year, we had 51, and, and the state had 32,963. So, we're looking at the percentages, percentages of level one, level two, level three, and level four, level four being the highest. So, you know, obviously, level one and level two, we would like to see our numbers lower, but I'll be realistic with you, level two is grade level. Okay, I wanna say that again, level two is grade level. When this, when the new version of the state assessment scores came out, I'll just be honest with, I mean, I expected to see my kids in level four. I mean, I, I felt like my, my students were good students, they were, they were, they're, they read well, they have good comprehension whenever they're reading, they have good math skills. Both of my students came in at level three, whenever, whenever this new measurement came out. And so, it's been a little bit of an adjustment for people to understand that level two is actually grade level. And that's, that's, that's just something that has to, has to be there to understand where this is at. Four is, is those exceptional students that are, are way over on the, on the scale. So, if we are, if we are above state average on, you know, on our level four and, and our level three, those are wins, okay? Those are successes. But we also have to realize that there are times that we are going to be above the state percentage in level one, okay? So, it's, it's okay to see that, that just gives us a point to where we can improve from. So, you can see, and I will point out, as a nature of the beast, as students get older, their state assessment scores tend to slide. And, and we see, I see that, we talk about that as superintendents within our league, where we see that, okay? You know, yes, we would love to have all of our 10th graders be in level two, three, and four. That is actually a big push to move them up, but the focus that we are going to take is not to move them all up into level three and four, is to see if we can move them out of level one and into level two, as we move forward. So, you can see our 10th graders, level one, we were higher than the state average. Level two, we were lower. Level three, we were lower. Level four, we were lower. So, why, why is that taking place? I can't answer that. But that, that isn't, that is a question that we can begin to ask for our KISA, our new KISA cycle.
Well, some of that might be because of getting jobs.
Getting jobs, yeah.
Relationships.
Mm-hmm, yep. When was the last time that any job asked for your assessment scores?
Well, but I mean, they're focusing somewhere else.
Yeah, their focus is elsewhere, so, yeah.
You know, if I wanna go, you know, boyfriend, girlfriend dumped you that day, and that would affect?
That could affect a lot, yeah. So, so, I mean, you know, these are one, one-time shots. The math data, I did go ahead and provide, and I don't know why I didn't do it for the others, I can, I can put it up there if you want me to. So, this would be last year's fourth graders as compared to the exact same students when they're in third grade. Now, obviously, as a whole, you know, that, that was, that's the class, but we're comparing the fourth grade class compared to the exact same class when they were back in third grade. So, we can see that, you know, level one, they were 7% here as fourth graders, level one, they were 17% as third graders. 29%, 46%. So, we're seeing some growth here. They're less, they're less in level one, more in level two, a little bit less in level three, a little bit less overall in level, but we did see increases in level two. So, you can compare those and take a look at those data, and take a look at those pieces of data as well. And I mean, you know, we've got pockets of, of things that are, you're, you're looking at, and you're like, well, why, why are those kids doing so well? You know, it's, again, it's the comparison of a single grade level, you know, whenever it comes to state assessment data. Then you'll notice that start, science, science is only, these particular grades, it's not as, not as prolific, so it's fifth grade, eighth grade, and 11th grade. You know, we're right at state average in 11th grade. You know, maybe a little bit below in eighth grade, fifth grade, you know, just a, a hair below, but we're super high in level four. So, I mean, you know, that's, that's a win, you know, whenever it comes to that fifth grade state assessment for last year, so that, those are huge numbers in comparison.
Fifth grade average was 295, and then we scored 316.
Yeah. And then I do wanna go ahead and point out, we were awarded the several star awards. I'll go ahead and blow this up a little bit. In terms of our graduation rate, we were a bronze, post-secondary effectiveness, and we were a bronze, and then the commissioner's award, you know, we did receive the commissioner's award for that, and we did receive a, a nice note from our state board representative today congratulating us on these, on these awards. There are other star recognitions that I have not, I, I will put it on me, I have not taken the time to fill out the paperwork to get those done, and that's, that's a goal of mine, to finish that out. There's about five other star recognitions that we can apply for. These are based off of state assessment scores, post-secondary effectiveness, and graduation rate, and so they're, they're, they just happen, and then there's five others that we can apply for. So, I will work on those this coming spring, whenever we start getting that information, because I believe we would qualify for many of them, which would, you know, I'm not out there looking for recognition, but I think it would give the students in our school the recognition that it's, it deserves, and I just have not, have not taken the opportunity to do so. But these are, these are out there, and so I can give you more ideas to what they actually mean at the next board meeting.
Would that help our accreditation, I mean?
No, I mean, it-
Just the recognition that we're-
Yeah, it didn't really affect the, the accreditation, you know, they, it's, it's kind of, you know, icing on the cake, but it, it's not gonna necessarily affect our accreditation. So, the, the, in terms of accreditation, the KISA plan was partially unveiled last week, I will be getting more information about that as, as time goes along to, 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 to again, be able to start guiding us in the direction of where we should go in terms of what this year's gonna look like for the future of KISA as well, so. Questions about the data? Does your brain hurt yet?
Any other questions or comments, or any administrators have anything they'd like to add, or, or two title teachers that are here today?
I might say, you know, anytime you make a change in education, everybody thinks it should be like you mean it, and like what they did in the middle school with changing your schedule, you'll be lucky to see that by the time those kids are freshmen. They say it takes about four or five years for your curriculum change and your schedule change to actually show. Not that you shouldn't look at changing it, but like, the test boards won't immediately be there, and, and we think in education, we're quick fixers, right? Like, I wanna pick it right now, but it will take a while to see, and it will probably be when your sixth graders are freshmen. But, I mean, it's just a global thing, it took a lot of people to look at that after their life, but then also, you can look at that, and know that, like, you need to look at your core, you gotta look at it, because you gotta see that change in five years.
Yeah.
Like, so, I don't know, just little things I was sitting here, I think it's kind of unclear that you can't recognize all the positive changes necessarily right away.
Dave, I have a question.
Sure.
The sex or training our teachers are going through, are we covering that? Cost for those classes, or those, how's that working?
You're, you're getting, meeting ahead of yourself, I think.
So, the, the letters training is covered by the state, and then we will discuss some incentives.
Okay.
Yeah. That's a good point, though.
Yeah.
Appreciate you thinking of that.
Met this morning, or this afternoon, Sarah and I met to set the agenda, that was specifically the letters, and did you ever figure out what the acronym means?
Not yet. Had a doctor's appointment, so.
Literacy, something, I don't know.
That's basically what you said, too, Patrick.
Yeah, literacy and science and something, no?
No, I think science, I don't know.
But when Mrs. Applegate is done, she'll spend two years and 60 hours on this training.
See, once you mentioned that a while ago, I, that's what got me to thinking, are we doing what we need to do to help, you know?
Yes.
And so, if you got a plan, then I-
Yeah, I got a, I got a plan, I got a plan.
That, that, stay tuned for next Monday night. You're just priming the pump for the next meeting.
Here we go, I got it, language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling.
Thank you.
Google.
So, so, yes, that, that is one, one thing that, if we wanna promote that extra training, especially this one, that takes a lot of outside time on the teachers. Some, some trainings, we do it as in-service or some other things, but some of these specialized trainings takes quite a bit of extra time, so.
Yeah. Has it been good so far? Has it been good so far, Diane?
Yeah, it's very good.
Okay.
But it is very time consuming.
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
So I guess my one que- the question I get on all this data and the state testing is. Are we just teaching the kids to the test? Or are we actually teaching what we need to teach to make the students successful? And that, cause it's, from the layman's viewpoint, we spent an awful lot of time on testing. Could that be better utilized some other way? So.
I, jump in. I mean, any of you jump in.
Exactly why I shared that other.
Right.
Chart with you.
Right. Yeah.
The assessments, the screeners, the state assessments, all that, yes, it's very important, but. We don't teach to the test, right? We teach the standards that are supposed to be on those assessments. But I guess from my standpoint, the post-secondary success is more important to me than any state assessment. So that's why I shared that data with you, that we are exceeding that predicted effective rate by 10%. So I feel like as a district, we are, you know, we can always improve without question, but I feel like we're doing pretty good. Compared to our kids from post-secondary.
And have, uh, having, personally having two kids at the high school level. Um, you know, I never would have dreamed that my daughter would have graduated with 30 credit hours. Or actually, yeah, right at 31 credit hours, um, from, for college credit. Um, she's bored at college because, because she was prepared, um, to, you know, to come out. So, I mean, I, I feel like, you know, we're not, we're not going back to the days where they would load everybody into the auditorium. And two weeks before the social studies assessment that was multiple choice, they would just teach the, basically the test. We're not, we don't do that. Um, I don't feel like we do that. I think we effectively teach what needs to be taught. Um, do we have some improvements to make on that? Absolutely. Um, through, um, through some things that we're looking at in the future of doing some curriculum alignment. To fill in some of the gaps that we may have either between buildings or between grade levels. Um, those are what we're focusing our, our attention on. Not necessarily focusing our attention on the assessment as, as the driving force. Does that answer your question? Cause I mean, you know, there were years as, as teachers where you taught the delta indicators. And those were the indicators that were going to be on the state assessments. And that's what the curriculum director would say, don't worry about everything else. Teach the delta indicators. And we, I, we, we have gotten away from that. So the assessments, whether they be fast bridge or state assessments, are a result of not a driving force in. Does that, does that help? Mm-hmm. Okay. Is that, would everybody agree with that?
I think the state is, this data that we're seeing is, is just a reflection of, you know, are our processes that we're using in our classroom? Because all our teachers are, are, you know, working their tails off trying to get their kids ready. And this data just gives us an indication of, are we putting the, the. Putting our efforts in the right spot or are we putting in different spots, something like that? You know, are the processes we're using in our classrooms getting the desired result?
I heard this morning when the administration and I met, I heard a couple of times. We are, we are focusing on those that are still lacking in skills. And we will continually do that, but sometimes we are dropping the ball on some of our upper, upper, mid, mid to upper level kids. And so that, that's something that we discussed as well. Then that's a, that's a focus that we need to look at as well. So not to lose those kids.
Any other questions on data? Thank you all administrators for helping provide all that and work us through it. Cause it's not an easy subject always to try to explain where we're at, so. Nothing else, we'll move to item five, a review of policy JBCC.
Okay, the, the reason that we put this on the agenda for tonight was simply because a week ago. A week ago, KSB came out with a recommended, um, revised JBCC. And I provided to you the rationale and recommendation for the revision. Um, that goes through, um, several different, um, topics of primarily focused on. Your existing out of district students. So currently, as of last year, we have 133 out of district students. The new, the new revision from KSB says that those 133 students. I forgot to look it up again for today. Those 133 students would need to go through the process. So they would have to apply. If they met the, if, if they got caught in one of the situations where we were over capacity for those students. Then they would have to go through the lottery with the possibility that they would not make it in. That is an interpretation. And, and as I stated last Monday night, my continued interpretation is that those are our kids. They have been here, they have proven themselves, and those are our kids. And so, so as we move forward, my recommendation is to not change our, not change the JBCC that we have already looked at in draft form. Except for to maybe clarify and say that we will grandfather students that are non-resident. In the 22, 23 school year, those will be grandfathered in. That's, that's my recommendation, but I do want to have discussion before we have, um, that final vote. And we, we, we vote on that li- next week. And if we need more time, then we can put it off until December board meeting. That's why we're doing it in November, so that we do have that extra month. But we also have this meeting and so we can have some discussion too.
Do we have to put to 23, 24, or can we say till, till graduation?
Um.
That way they're already, if we're a grandfather, their.
I, well, the, the, the. We could, if we can also guarantee that all of those students would meet any, any, um. Any criteria that we would set for, um, out of district students. Because at the end of the 24, 25 school year. We will review all students that are out of district, all non-resident students. We have to review all non-resident students to see if they meet the criteria for student in good standing. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I guess I just, as I've thought about it for the last week. I would hate to be a parent that watched my kids come through elementary. Partway through middle school and then the school district says, sorry, you can't graduate from here.
Well.
Because of this, that, or the other.
Right. And, and, and the way we have it written right now. Any of those things that would keep them from being a student and not, a student not in good standing. Um, are all things that the student and the parent can control.
Right. I agree with that.
So, so, so it should not be a surprise.
If.
If that were to come down to it. And we will also notify them prior to May 15th. So, I mean, so there, there will be, there will be other indicators prior to May 15th. If they're not going to be a student and not in good standing for the, for the next school year. So I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I really feel like the, there will be avenues in place. That it won't be a surprise. Um, we won't, we won't just spring it on them in August before their senior year.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
I guess I was just thinking of the parents' stress, will my kids be accepted? You know, will they have to go through the lottery? You know, and.
And, and if they're here, so, so anybody after next school year. They, they won't have to go through the lottery again. Um, it will only be new students that would be applying to come. So, so, I mean, it's kind of like the students that we already have right now. We, we, I believe we're hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong. Those students that are already out of district students, they won't need to go through the process. The students for the, for the 24, 25, no?
25, 26.
25, 26, unless they have been notified, then they won't have to go through the process again either. And everybody will be aware of that back in May. Does that, does that make sense? I'm, I'm struggling with the timeframe.
Well, we've got a year, year and a half to make sure everybody's focusing on.
Yeah.
On the right things.
Yes.
It's not, I'm worried I blindside anybody.
No, no.
And the other challenge is setting that maximum student level. So that we don't hit that lottery.
Yeah, yeah.
Position.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Then, then that gives you a lot more flex, some more flexibility.
More flexibility. So that'll be at our April meeting. And we'll have discussion prior to that with, with some of the discussions that we'll have administratively. So, is everyone okay with? Maybe not going with the revised recommendation, but continuing with our draft? Yeah. Do, do we want to specifically put in something that, um, non-resident students will be grandfathered in? Non-resident students for the 23, 24 school year will be not, will be grandfathered in?
I think that, that would.
As long as it's a criteria.
As long as they meet that criteria.
Yeah. Okay. Okay.
And that's the other part that we will discuss tomorrow, uh, next week is the, the, what level of that criteria is.
Yeah, and I have a couple, I have a couple of other examples for that. So if we want to see numbers, or if we want to just have it open. So, okay. Okay.
And, and my, my guess is time we get to 25, 26, the legislature will change something and.
And it won't be your problem either. You and Dawn will be like, woo, I don't have to worry about that.
But, but for the good of the district, I would guess the, would probably be some changes that will.
Yeah.
For better or for worse, that's.
Yeah, that one, that one will probably see some revisions because it will be put into practice. So I'm sure the legislature will hear, you know, things as, as we put it into practice. Um, but, yeah, that'll, that'll definitely be something that will, will probably. We were hoping over the last two years it would change, but nobody held their breath long enough to see that happen, so. But I'll have that ready for you for next meeting. So thank you all for your input.
Any other questions on the, the policy? Anything else that, that we need to talk about? Again, thank you administrators and, and teachers for coming tonight and helping with this, so. I think it worked out pretty good to have this, this, this topic today. Instead of trying to cram this into a regular board meeting. Not quite as pushed to get through it all, so. I think we're done.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Well, she made maiden second to adjourn. All in favor? Pos, motion carries six zero. Thank you very much for everybody coming.